Calling this meeting to order on March 18, 2024 at 16:00. If you stand with me to recite. Is there anyone who would like to say a prayer?
We do thank and praise you, Jesus, for this evening that we can maybe get things settled tonight. And we ask you to be here and speak to hearts. We just want to do the town's business as it should be. So be with us, Jesus, bless this meeting, and that it be a fruitful one. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Before roll call, I just want to remind everyone this is special meeting. So the only thing that we can discuss are the two items on the agenda, which are the two contracts that are set for tonight. However, I know that some of you may have some questions. So once we adjourn, I'll be happy to stay here as well as the rest of council and answer any questions that you may have. All right, go ahead and call them. Mr. Kaman, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Duffy, Ms. Sonic, here is Lynn, here, Mr. Flowers, Chris Powell, here, Mr. Booth.
May I say something really quick, gently? Prior to this meeting, I spoke with the council members about my personal feelings. We weren't talking about anything to do with the city. My personal feeling is, and I think everyone's aware of the controversy going on with this position. So I wanted to explain that tonight I sit here as parliamentarian, but I will not be issuing any legal rulings out of respect to Mr. Rowe and out of respect to the other council members, understanding that I believe, based on the law, that I am in contract, that I am the acting city attorney. However, to avoid impropriety and the appearance that someone's taking sides, I will not issue legal opinions tonight. And I will only do that when we have the full council present. Thank you.
We're going to be doing just the second readings on these two ordinances. So ordinance 2124. I'm sorry, before we do that, I just wanted to introduce Ms. Sue Powell. She is our new councilwoman that took the place of Mr. Greg Smith, the seat that he vacated. I just wanted to put that on.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say a few words and thank Rita for giving me this opportunity. I think that my experience, my background can lead to some successful solutions for our city. I have to withhold my emotional happiness and excitement until some of the controversy gets resolved, but I think I will be the one celebrating.
Okay, so ordinance 2124. An ordinance adopting labor contracts with fire department workers is.
An ordinance adopting labor contracts with fire department workers. Whereas labor agreements have been reached with fire department workers. Now therefore be renewed by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The labor agreement with the fire department workers effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027 attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is adopted. This one shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law. Do令 acted by council on second reading the 18th day of March, 2024.
The council discussion.
Council discussion, okay.
I, most of you out there know that I spent 12 years over in the finance area. And one of the things, and I know Mr. Johnson back there, our union representative, because I've worked with him. And it bothered me last council meeting when Mr. Taylor said that these were simply rubber stamped by council. I would hope that council would never think of anything being rubber stamped. We are the legislative body of the city and we should know what a contract is all about. Basically, the way it should work, or I hope it worked, is the city manager, the city attorney, and the auditor are involved in the mediation of all the union contracts. When that starts and takes place, in each council meeting thereafter, council is brought up to date on where the mediation stands. They can say, yes, it sounds good, or no, did you look at this or have this? I'm not sure that took place. I was not, of course, involved in any executive session, but I know there was not any communication upfront in open council. Council can actually send any union contract back for mediation or arbitration. It doesn't mean it's a slam dunk, a approval. And had I been on council a while back, I would want to know the information, the background of giving 8%, 4%, 8% this year, 4% next year, and 4% the following year. I'm not saying employees don't deserve it. But what I did look up is it's the highest union agreement in the state of Ohio right now. And if that's the case, I would want the auditor to tell me, did he run the figures when these were presented? What is it going to cost us this year and next year? And how does the revenue stand up to those expenses? I don't have that. There's also, in the contract, there's insurance, which generally increases just about every year. You have benefits, you have, uniform allowances that probably go up because of those costs. So we're here tonight to approve these contracts, but yet we probably don't have all the information. Now, do I suggest holding it up? No, you're right. I mean, that's a fair, the breakdown was in communication. The breakdown with the city manager, this attorney, auditor, council. I mean, everybody's going to play a part in this. But just so the public knows, that's what we should have done. I'm looking at Mr. Johnson back there. Am I, am I right?
Yeah, I do believe that Taylor was involved with the finances.
That what was Taylor's? I'm sure he was.
And also, I believe, my understanding, it also went through the finance committee. So that's why I usually look at that, make sure the finance committee. And I thought Greg was part of that.
Well, the numbers weren't the same. We did approve some numbers. I take the numbers changed a little bit, but not substantially. And one of the things, what I'm just thinking is one of the members that were on the finance committee, one of the things I found completely embarrassing, that we was paying lifeguards more than part-time servants. So when you talk about kicking him wages up, at least on the fire department, and you say percentages, well, yeah, but who can actually ask a man to run into a burning house and pay him less than you pay the lifeguard to jump into a pool? So I think, I think we have to, yes, there was a breakdown in communications, but not on council's part, because council really tried.
Yes.
For instance, when you have an ordinance proposed with a contract, in my, all my years on council, the ordinance and the contract was sent to the clerk. So the clerk could distribute them to all the council members. So when they got the meeting on Monday night, they had everything in their hand to be able to, and that's nothing on Susan, because that wasn't followed in this case. And it ended up being a short delay, but hopefully that's the end of the short delay.
Yeah, usually your contract is finalized and signed, and then the ordinance is prepared with the contract attached to it.
Exactly.
I just kind of wanted to bring that up, that that should be the process, and it should be the process as we move forward.
I agree. Anyone else? Just. Ms. Sonic, yes, Ms. Lynn, yes, Ms. Powell, yes, Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Can I be in a point of order? You need to have someone make a motion to adopt, and then, and then call a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt? Anyone?
This is ordinance 2224. An ordinance adopting labor contracts with service workers. Whereas labor agreements have been reached with service workers. Now therefore be renewed by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The labor agreement with the service workers effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2027. Attached here to and incorporated herein by reference is adopted. This one shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law. Do令 acted by council on second reading the 18th day of March, 2024.
Any discussion? I know it's the same as, we had just, they're both the same kind of contracts.
Usually they are. The only other question I might have is usually management, an ordinance for management comes in at the same time, because they're non-union. Might want to follow up with that, too.
Mr. Ken Jimmy, do you have anything in the works for a management ordinance?
I haven't talked to Mr., I haven't talked to Mr. Taylor Sappington yet, but I'm sure there is.
Will it be ready for the meeting next week, sir?
I'll talk to Mr. Sappington, yes, I'll have it ready, if you need me to have it ready, yes.
Thank you, sir.
But wouldn't you be the one doing the negotiations and things, or making those decisions?
It'd be a second ordinance, and I'll get together with the auditor. And we can run it by any committee you'd like, or we could bring it before council.
There's no negotiations for management.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
They get the same thing as, I was just wondering if it was still. They just need to decide and get the ordinance.
Any other discussions on this? No? Is there a motion to adopt?
A second.
Go ahead and call them.
Ms. Lynn.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Flowers.
Yes.
Ms. Sonic.
Yes.
So both ordinances have passed with four votes.
Uh, President, just a point of order, could you revote on the first ordinance?
Yeah, I was thinking about that. We need to revote on the first one, because we didn't actually do a second of it. So, no, I don't know. Do we need to reread the whole thing?
No, no, you have a motion in a second. Just go ahead and revote on the.
Okay, well, let's just do a motion to adopt. Anyone want to do that? Right, can you check that? Okay, any seconds? Okay, go ahead and call it again.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, I think we're legal now. At this point, we do have public comments. And I just have to remind you, the comments need to be related to what was on the agenda, which was these two contracts. Any comments? Yes, sir?
My name's Bernie Rowe, and I wanted to ask John Johnson, if you could clarify for the public, because I've seen a lot on the social media about, you know, the employees not being paid. But can you explain to the public that the employees have been paid, and that once this goes into effect, it'll be retroactive?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's fair. So the contract, and this is normal, it's not unusual, the contract's still, we like to have them finished before the expiration date. Unfortunately, this didn't get finished. When we say finished, a tenement agreement with the city, which was back, I think, January 23rd. With that in place, before contracts usually expire, we ask for an extension, just to say for retroactivity, if there's, because we want to keep the contract binding still at that time. So the contract's still in place, nobody lost any money. Everybody's been paid, everybody pays the benefits. Everything is, like, it's still in place. But with the adoption, once this is finalized, then we go back and do the retro for that, for the employees. So you're correct, Bernie, that nobody was, nobody was harmed.
Okay. Can you relieve a lot of anxiety?
That's why I don't do the Facebook and all this. I live a great life.
Thank you, it's retroactive.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm going to stand up for this one, because my name's Greg Smith. I live 38 Adams Street. And I had the pleasure of all the years of working with Sue when she was the auditor. And believe me, we knocked heads all the time. I can't tell you how happy I am that she's sitting there, because I think she showed you her financial experience tonight. And, and I will also say during that time that she was on council, she didn't play any favors or any, or any, any side this way or any side that way. It was, she had her opinion, now you can argue about her opinion, but what she ruled as an auditor, she ruled as an auditor, and that was it. The other thing I would like to say is I'm really glad to see that Nancy's sitting there, healthy and smiling, because we were worried about her.
Yeah.
And just looked great, and I'm glad you're sitting there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Anyone else?
I would like to say something. He just told me that, can I say that about?
Yeah.
Delbert?
Yeah.
One of our longtime city employees, Delbert, what's his last name?
Times.
Times of the heart attack. And you want to tell us if you know anything about his health?
I know he's home, he's doing well. And hopefully he'll recover, but he is.
Lynn, would you mind standing up and give another prayer for Delbert?
Yes.
We do thank you, Jesus, for just listening to us and all this taking place so far. It's good, and with Delbert, you know, we call you the great physician. And we're going to leave him in your hands and let you have your way with it. And we just give you all the praise and honor in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
If there's no other comments or questions, we can move to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm running.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn?
Yes.
So at this point, the meeting is over.
Can I shut this off?
No.
Okay.
No. The meeting is over, but we wanted to stay and answer any questions or anything at all that you might have on your mind. I know there's a lot going on in the media that's being said. So I figured this would be a good time to have a discussion since we're here.
I appreciate the calmness that there is tonight and business being done. And so, you know, we might be the topic, the towns around, but you know, it makes no difference as long as everything looks in here like it should. So we appreciate that, we appreciate that.
We do appreciate the comments. Anyone else have anything else?
Yes, ma'am, Carrie Johnson, Athens County Independent. I guess I was just wondering, when Sue was sworn in, and also you mentioned that you feel like you're going to come out the happy one. I was just wondering if Dunphy's on council? Because that would make, would that make eight members?
Mr. Voltilini had issued a legal opinion, because I asked him to when that question came up. And the gist of it is that Mr. Duffy is not on council. Ms. Sue Powell is on council because of the fact that the charter says council has 30 days to, between us, figure out and appoint someone. The 30 days passed. After that, the president can then appoint, which is what I did. Because again, Ms. Powell does have a lot of experience to bring to council, and I felt that we needed that. We all have gifts on our own, right? But hers is finance, and we desperately need to have someone who's had that experience, who's been auditor, who knows all the ins and outs of, you know, that position and how to deal with it. And that is why I chose Ms. Powell. There was all the reasons.
We're well pleased.
Tell her what she was sworn in.
Do you remember the date? When did you appoint me?
Last Thursday. Last Thursday. Last Thursday. Yeah. I was sworn in just hours after she appointed me.
And that was in writing, and the clerk was giving a copy of it, correct? Did you give the clerk the copy of her?
I don't know if I have it on me tonight. I'll have to check. If not, I'll definitely walk it over to her house.
Just email a copy to the clerk.
I'll walk it over to her house.
Okay.
She's right across from me anyway.
But you did file, you did give a copy to.
Yeah, so what happened is I appointed Ms. Powell Thursday after midnight, because I am up half the night anyway. Ms. Powell went to an attorney's office, Ms. Powell, and was sworn in Thursday, you know, at the time where most people are awake. And then later, I took her sworn-in oath and took it to the election board in Athens, and they stamped to proceed along with all the legal opinions that Mr. Voltilini had already put out, that had been requested, he finished them, and, you know, put them out for council. That was Thursday.
And another question I have is, has the city been in touch with Jonathan Rowe about, like, him being hired? Or is that kind of over because of the invalidity of last week's special meeting?
Legally, Mr. Rowe is not hired. Legally, we have a contract with Mr. Voltilini, a signed contract, that was signed back in, I want to say, February 12th, when we passed the ordinance to hire him. And the contract was attached. And it is public, where you can see it. I don't know that I have it with me tonight, but.
I have a copy of the unsigned version, so I requested another one from the auditor.
Okay. I can make them available if any of you would like a copy of his contract. That's not a problem, just let me know, and I will be happy to send one out. I don't think I have it with me tonight, I wasn't thinking about that. Yes, sir?
Did you say you did it in accordance with, what is it? 403 ver. Charter by appointing in 30 days? Is that where it comes from, from, I believe?
Yes.
How can we pick and choose which part of 403 we lose, we use? You use 403 to appoint, but the other guys use 403 as a majority vote to say that they're right.
Well.
So how can I have half of it being right for one person, and the other half not be right for another?
So I will read you 403. And then.
I feel, I feel comfortable answering. You're correct, 403 is part of it. But there is a court of appeals case out there that says 4.09 is the universe in which this council acts. What does 409 say? 409 says we can, council can only speak to an ordinance or a resolution. If it's general business, it's an ordinance. And 410 of the city code says that an ordinance has to be passed by a majority of the elected members. That's four votes. That's why, that's why, that was, that was the basis of my legal opinion.
Okay, so she doesn't have to have an ordinance to pass it, why do they?
Because 403, so I'm sure you've read it, and I'm sure you understand.
And I was just.
403 says, 403 says, council has 30 days to act. If council doesn't act, she has the absolute power to act on her own without a resolution.
But council did that.
No, they didn't, they didn't have a majority vote.
Here's my other question. We never in the past, with the absentee of members of council, went through and used it as a ordinance to elect anybody to council in the past.
No court ever.
And we're saying, past residents in a lot of cases are applying to us, because one side did one thing and the other one doesn't. It's okay for this one to do it. This never happened in the past. Why isn't justice right now?
We're following the order.
Because ordinance trumps, ordinance trumps tradition, every time.
And we are following the charter.
Charter trumps precedent, always.
My, my opinion is, you have the best of the interests in passing on the one side. It should be legally out between whoever, sometimes between lawyers, but you have a legal best to where, well, to me, it's what quote-unquote. You go through, you side with them, you get hired in as attorney for the city of Nelsonville.
Sir, let me, let me assure you something, sir. My opinion is based on the law. It has nothing to do with me. And if you believe for one minute that I'm somehow benefiting by sitting here and being attacked like that, and I appreciate your opinion, I understand the appearance.
And that's what, we change their opinion with Mr. Hunter.
Yeah.
If he agrees with you, he gets his settlement. So.
Just a moment, just a moment. Order.
Neither here nor there.
But let me answer that.
That is the presumption that I'm getting.
That's right.
And I know.
So let me answer that. You said, if he agrees with Mr. Hunter, Mr. Hunter gets paid. The legal opinion that Mr. Hunter wrote was in 2018.
Doesn't matter when he wrote it, because he's been paid for it, even according to him, no. So that's one of the settlements, that's what it is. It's just the appearance that I see. Now whether there's any truth behind it, I don't know. But that's the appearance that he gives me in the private.
I assure you, there's no truth behind that. Furthermore.
And I can assure you, sir, that my, my legal opinion had nothing to do, I wish I could issue a legal opinion that would let me walk out of here. But that's not what the law says. The law says what it says. That's what I promised everybody when I was first brought here. I said, I call balls and strikes, what does the law say? You know, I've been doing this for 30 years, could I be wrong? I've been wrong lots of times. Do I think I'm wrong here? Absolutely not. I'm very confident, my opinion on this. And I apologize if I've even given the appearance of taking sides, which I surely have not. And if that's the case, I apologize.
Well, that's the appearance that I get.
Okay, was that from me or just from the general? Because I don't think I've ever given anyone the appearance that I've taken sides on anything. Have I, sir?
Well, the way it looks real quick, because one, you didn't have a signed contract.
Oh, no, sir, you did.
A meeting was called questioning whether your employment was going to be with a council or not. You were quickly brought in, signed in, sworn in, before the meeting could take place and placed on. before the meeting could take place and placed on. I mean, it's...
I can assure you, all of that is incorrect.
Well, I'll...
Well, let me answer, let me answer to what you just said, okay? On the 12th, February 12th, we had a council meeting. We went through counsel, we had an ordinance, it was voted on, it was approved. The contract was not signed until it was approved, and I signed it at the very end of the meeting. He signed it, I signed it. I would not have ever signed a contract that was not legal, never. And I assure you, there was a contract signed on that day.
Sir, I'm not...
I'm just giving you the subject.
May I explain, may I explain why I had to, why I got sworn in? Counsel asked me to do a legal opinion. I can't do legal opinion till I'm a city attorney. How do I become city attorney by ordinance? And then I have to be sworn in. Had I not been sworn in, then I would have been in trouble. So, I had to be sworn in to do my legal opinion, sir. Number two, if you recall, even Mr. Clement said, "Look, just make sure, told city council president, please make sure you don't make a decision prior to that." Right, he asked, Mr. Clement asked Ms. Nguyen, the president at that time, he asked her, "Please don't make any decisions till Mr. Voltilini issues a decision." I had to be sworn in to issue that decision.
Yep, very good.
Me, it didn't have, because it was conflict of interest. I didn't...
I shouldn't have been, I didn't make a decision on myself, sir. I made a decision on the law. It would absolutely, so if they'd asked me...
Well, your interpretation decides somebody else can interpret that and replace them.
That's the way the law, it's the beauty of the law. That's why I love the law so much.
And my opinion and perception is is that you use your interpretation of the law to benefit one side out and benefit yourself.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
And that's just my interpretation.
Thank you, sir. Can I ask a question?
Your comments, the way the reading gets back, I was standing up here to do, because I want to address actually what happened with the ordinance on Mr. Voltilini. There was two readings to that ordinance. And the ordinance by itself included and made part of, made Mr. Voltilini's contract part of the ordinance. It didn't, it didn't say, "Go out and harass him on that," the ordinance says, attached is Mr. Voltilini's contract, and it is made, included and made part of this ordinance. Now, in that question, I want to ask, who hasn't signed Tom and Jimmy's contract? If it has to be a city manager to sign a contract. Counsel can hire people by contract, and it's their decision in the ordinance. When you put in the language in ordinance, his contract is included and made part of this ordinance. Then everybody gets to vote on it. And then because there wasn't the fifth vote, that we had to wait 30 days before, you know, the president of council could have an advisor set aside. That wasn't right either because, and I'm not slamming anybody, but a lot of people sitting on council doesn't have a lot of experience sitting here for the last 25 years. The other thing is, it is true that for 25 years, people was appointed to counsel by emotion. But except for the one time that Gary Hunter ruled on in 2018, every one of them had to get four votes before they were appointed. Now, the thing about Gary Hunter benefiting, he wrote that opinion in 2018, and that is not part of his lawsuit. And...
And he didn't get paid for this.
If he doesn't get paid for that, that was just pulled out of the archives to where he ruled. I guess, what, I don't know how he could have looked forward to it by six years and said, "Well, I'm gonna identify, benefit myself." He cited this Supreme Court case that said, a highest Supreme Court case that said, "A majority of counsel is four votes." I don't know how you get around that. It's beyond me. But when you say for 25 years, we just did it by ordinance, we did, it took four votes. I mean, you do it by motion, it took four votes. No other time that, except when Gary Hunter wrote that opinion in 2018, was anybody ever appointed to counsel without four members of council voting for him.
Thank you.
I think she had her hand up. Did you want to ask a question?
So, backing reference to her question in regards to the voting and stuff. So, according to Ohio Revised Code, Section 731.43, Section C, it states in here, "A majority of all eligible committee members constitute a quorum, and a majority of the quorum is required to make the appointment." So, if that was done at the last meeting, and there were only six members sitting on the table at that time, and that were the ones that were present, there was five. I'm sorry, there was five. So, if there were five here, and a majority would have been that three when that had ruled at that time, charter says four. Ohio Revised Code trumps the charter, wouldn't it?
No. That's where we get it. We all get confused with that. I've been there. I'm getting a little majority, it's a legal question.
I was just gonna point out that you were asking about that legal opinion and then Gary Hunter's legal opinion here on the table. Do you want to have a copy of both of those?
I am making more copies if anyone else wants one. But without papers, I'm better with it. So, it's coming.
You might explain how it rule when you...
I'm not, I feel very comfortable talking about my personal situation as far as a conflict of interest or any allegations of a proprietary on me.
The reason that people form a charter and vote it in is so they don't have to go by Ohio Revised Code. They go by what it says in the charter. And to get that opinion from somebody other than me, call the higher municipal league and ask them why people form charters. It's so they don't have to follow a Ohio Revised Code. They follow what it says in the charter.
You should also send a copy of that to the radio station because that's where a lot of this controversy is coming from.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I think that would clear a lot of stuff up if you sent that opinion to them.
Nancy wants to say something.
Nancy's got something, sorry.
Usually, I keep my mouth shut, and I don't say anything. I sit and listen and I watch. Saturday, I went to a seminar, which was taken over by attorneys. Attorneys. And what you said about a charter trumping the revised code is absolutely true. Absolutely true.
That's all I have to say.
Bernie, I know you had a question earlier, you have raised your hand, and...
I just basically pointed out that...
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I forget.
Yes, ma'am.
But this will be before your time. Who made the decision that Gary Hunter was not to be paid for his work?
You can't discuss that.
That's right. I can't. I'm sorry. We were told by the attorneys not to say a word, not to talk to Mr. Hunter as far as that was... No. And to address what Greg has said, I think in the charter, it even states that if it's not addressed in the charter, then it's whatever the Ohio Revised Code says. Exactly. But the charter does trump. And this is, and this is something that I have kind of learned, and I'm no legal expert, but I've tried to read some of the summaries, and not our current summaries. I'm talking about old opinions. And they always say that a majority is more than 50%. And also, under our 403, 403, is that the one? And it says, "A majority of counsel" for the voting. I have read where they, it doesn't say a majority of counsel present, it says a majority of counsel. And counsel would be, is gonna have to be interpreted if they mean just those president or counsel is seven people or that time with the one empty vote or one empty seat was in a total of six. Either way, six or seven, and if it takes the majority and over 50%, then it takes four. Now, I don't know that that is legally correct. That's just some of the information that I picked up in reading some of the opinions the last week.
My only problem is I've sat here at counsel in the past. I watched it on there, on YouTube, and on more than one occasion, when it didn't look by to ordinances, there was more than one decision passed by less than four votes in this council because we didn't have council members to get it with. We only had four.
Can't do that.
If there's only four, all four have to go for an ordinance. I believe, I was on council since then.
I own it, so I agree, but there was different things that were passed through here that was agreed upon. And it took the majority. I've sat and read this, Greg, you can open your mouth all you want, but I've sat and watched it.
But you're not entitled to your facts. And if you look, if you find anywhere in the middle of the council where that happens, I'll buy you a steak dinner.
You're only entitled to yours.
Ladies and gentlemen, if anyone has any more questions other than that, otherwise we'll call it complete adjourned. And thank you so much for coming.
That's all.
Mr. Johnson?
I should too.
Hold on.
I love the motion. Yeah, you already did that. Yeah, that was definitely where we opened, opened discussing that.
And I know, let me just say this. I know that Matthew did not want to discuss this because of that. There is another opinion that was issued by one of Keller's attorneys that works for him, in which basically they say that he doesn't get paid even though he has a contract. He doesn't get paid. He didn't want to share that because it would just open up other stuff with the gentleman. Yeah. It's ridiculous.
Yes.